Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Kitty Hawk Town Council meeting to order, Monday, March 7th, 2022, Kitty Hawk Town Hall at 6:00 PM. Thank you all for the big turnout we have here tonight. And those of you watching at home, we thank you. I guess you noticed Councilwoman Lynn McLean is not here tonight. Something came up and she has an excused absence. If you're able to stand, please, join me in a moment of silence followed by the pledge I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands. One... folks, we've got some comments to say here in just a little bit. We've got a Ukrainian flag behind us, some beautiful flowers here adorning our rooms. Anastasia, it's yours.
Good evening to the town council of Kitty Hawk, mayor, and the good citizens of Kitty Hawk. I would like to take this opportunity to address regarding a very important and timely issue. The issue I would like to present today is regarding an unprovoked attack on Ukraine by Russian military. My name is Anastasia Flana. My husband, Ron Flana, our nearly two-year-old son and I are residents of the town of Southern Shores. My husband is the owner of Duck Dally in Dock, and I'm self-employed in the town of Kitty Hawk. I have been a member of the Otterbanks community since 2012. Our community is amazing. As you know, people here are kind and helpful. I feel overwhelmingly blessed to be a part of this community and to be able to raise my son here. I was born and raised in Ukraine. My family is in Vidinsa region, Ukraine. It is 6:00 PM right now here, which means it is 1:00 AM in Ukraine Kiev time, and this will mark day 13 of the brutal Russian attack upon Ukraine and her people. My family is busy making camouflage netting and well-to-tank defense hedgehogs, as they call them, having to take breaks and hide underground because of the air attack warnings. My family and the Ukrainian people, this population, are a very proud and determined set of individuals, and right now they're in the fight of their lives. Their actions and actions of free people all over the world will determine the fate and the outcome of this conflict. I would like to present this opportunity to the town of Dock to help and donate on behalf of Ukrainian people and the cause of democracy. With the Ukrainian community, the Otterbanks are developing a GoFundMe page that should be active and approved within another day or two. Also, we have the Otterbanks real team working together with the Otterbanks Rotary Club are working on dedicating a nonprofit to help us collect the funds for the matter. This effort will directly support citizens of Ukraine who are being affected by the conflict. The money raised will go directly to purchase medical supplies, food, and other humanitarian supplies as needed to help people in the conflict region to survive and then rebuild. Rest assured, this fundraising effort will be transparent, and all the monies raised will go to the intended recipients. I know an overwhelming amount of people, both business owners and ordinary citizens, are ready and willing to help out with this important cause. Please help us, help our global neighbors and our own neighbors, as there is significant community of Ukrainians now living in the Otterbanks who all have families in the conflict regions. I appreciate your time and attention to the matter. The Japanese writer Rengesaki Satoru remarked, "Individually, we're one drop; together, we are an ocean." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anastasia. The people of Kitty Hawk and this town council also want to show our support to you, Anastasia. I can't tell you the conversations we've had between council members about what we wanted to do for you tonight. We knew you were coming, but we've got a little something special. I guess you've already figured it out by some earlier pictures we had to take. Town of Kitty Hawk's got a proclamation, and I'd like to read that to you now if I could. Proclamation solidarity with the people of Ukraine. Whereas Ukraine proclaimed its independence from the Union of Soviet Socialist Republics on August 24th, 1991, and has been a fully independent country since December, 1991. And whereas Ukraine is home to nearly 44 million citizens, is the second-largest country on the European continent, and is a unitary republic led by a president elected by popular vote. And whereas Ukraine is a nation rich in natural resources with a market economy known to be high-tech industrial base, as well as having strong agricultural production. And whereas in 2014, the Russian military, under the direction of Vladimir Putin, invaded and then annexed the Crimean Peninsula from Ukraine in violation of international law and agreements, resulting in the deaths of an estimated 13,000 Ukrainian soldiers and civilians. And whereas on February 24th, 2022, Vladimir Putin and Russia launched an unprovoked invasion of Ukraine, shattering decades-long peace in Europe. And whereas we recognize these acts of war are greatest felt by the people of Ukraine, we must stand with them as their personal safety and way of life are now under assault by an authoritarian regime. And whereas we must unite as to condemn these actions of war from Vladimir Putin and Russia and send a strong message that we will not allow aggressions against democracy. Now, therefore, the Kitty Hawk Town Council hereby proclaims that Kitty Hawk stands in solidarity with the Ukrainian people and encourages all to join in condemnation of Vladimir Putin's acts of war and Russia's invasion of a free and democratic Ukraine. Proclaimed the 7th day of March, 2022, signed by me, D. Craig Garis, Mayor of Kitty Hawk. I'd like to present you a signed copy, Anastasia.
Thank you. She can take one when she leaves.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
That was great. Thank you, folks. Okay, we're down to public comment. Lynn, it's like Lynn left us. Anyone wish to speak at public comment tonight? Yeah, we'll go back. Anybody wish to speak at public comment? All right, let the record... No one showed up. Chief Tally, I think you've got some presentations to make.
Yes, sir.
Acknowledgements. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council. You can sit off. Thank you first and foremost for giving me the opportunity to recognize some of our folks with some of the great things they've accomplished. First, we have a newly created deputy fire chief position. This position is going to be very challenging because it's how it's formed. It's going to be something very new to us, okay? But I am strongly encouraged that the right person has been selected for the position. After filling the interim position for several weeks and doing an outstanding job, we decided to make a permit. Please join me in congratulating Jasper Rogers as the new deputy fire chief for City of our Department. Please. Okay, next, our department conducted a comprehensive promotional process. It started last April and it concluded this past month, February. Considerable effort and time went into preparing and going through this process, and I commend each of the candidates. The following personnel was selected, and I very much look forward to seeing the great things they're going to do going forward. We have Lieutenant Dave McCully, Lieutenant Jeremy Boyce, and Lieutenant Joe Case. Please get around. Okay, so each year, we like to recognize a member of the organization that goes above and beyond, okay? And most often, it's a difficult decision because there's a lot of good things that are going on, okay? This year, there was someone that clearly stood out. This individual has truly made an impact, not only with our department, but in our community. It is my honor and privilege to recognize Ron Tumalo for the 2021 Firefighter Year. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. I hope you will continue with this practice. I like that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Congratulations again, gentlemen. All right, back to public comment. Lynn, we don't have anybody signed up, correct?
Yes, sir.
And again, once again, anybody wish to speak at public comment tonight? Okay, council, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
Motion by Charlotte, second.
I'll say.
Second by Jeff. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we had no items removed from the consent agenda. Public hearing. Rob, it's like you're up. Council, I need a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
So moved by Jeff, second.
Second.
Second by David. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Rob, we in public hearing. Yours, sir.
All right. This first one pertains to a text amendment for Section 42-528, regulations dealing with the accessory dwelling units. You can see in the proposal from the staff report that the main ones listed here, it would eliminate Section 42-528(c). That's the requirement that accessory dwelling units located in rear or side yards. In subsection, what's currently subsection G, it changes the maximum height from 28 feet measured from original grade to measured from finished grade, which is done just to make it consistent with how we're measuring the maximum building height for the new construction for residence, single-family residences. And it also eliminates subsection J, which is one that required the property owner to file with the county, with the register of deeds a declaration containing reference to the deed stating that the accessory dwelling unit wouldn't be sold separate from the primary residence. If you'll remember, a couple of months ago, the text amendment came forward and council adopted a new definition for accessory dwelling unit, which took out the requirement for a kitchen to be present for it to be considered accessory dwelling unit. So any detached structure of living space now falls under these current regulations. I got multiple comments from citizens and from council alike. I think we created some unintended consequences with that, so I was kind of asked to relook at it and take it back to the planning board to address that. The main one being the requirement that they be located in rear or side yards, not protruding in front of the primary residence. And the biggest argument for that being that currently we allow accessory structures, like if it was just a detached garage or a shed or whatever, as long as it didn't have living space in it, could be located anywhere in the lot as long as it meets setback requirements. But having the living space in it trips it into these regulations, meaning it would have to go in the rear or side yard, even if from the exterior, a detached garage with, you know, attic space above it could look identical to a detached garage with, you know, one bedroom or just some office space, you know, a personal office above it. And just didn't really see the justification in that, having one set of standards for one and kind of allowing the other to go anywhere on the lot. When it took us to the planning board, they did have some concerns with it. They discussed possibilities, including requiring an increased front yard setback for accessory dwelling units in the front yard, as well as allowing the accessory dwelling units in front yards as a special use permit, which would require case-by-case review, but have to go back to the planning board and town council for each one. Ultimately, no additional restrictions were included as part of the board's recommendation. They did unanimously approve or recommend approval of the changes that have listed in the staff report. The other one, subsection J, that's being proposed to be removed, after talking to Casey about that one, kind of felt that it was just unnecessary for the property owners to have to do in order to sell them separately. First, they would have to subdivide the lot, so if the lot's not big enough to subdivide, they can't sell them separately anyways. And if the lot is big enough to subdivide and they can meet setbacks and all, then we shouldn't have any issue with them selling it separately. And then I mentioned to Mayor Garis this morning, after this public hearing had been scheduled and advertised and all, I had another conversation with a property owner who was planning a detached garage with living space above it, which would fall under these accessory dwelling unit regulations. And he wanted to, he had a rather large lot, and he wanted to have a second, a different driveway accessing the detached garage so he could back his boat into it. Currently, we have a regulation that says accessory dwelling units shall not be served by a driveway separate from that serving the principal dwelling. As I think about it and talking with this property owner, if the argument being used for taking out the requirement for being in the rear or side yard is that, you know, you can have a detached garage in the front yard with no living space above it, it's no problem. Likewise, you can have a detached garage in your front yard and have a separate driveway accessing it with no problem, but the minute you put in living space, it falls under these regulations. So I just wanted to put that forward to council as well, in case that one be removed from it. I did speak with Casey this morning because of it not being included in the advertisement or, you know, what was originally scheduled. And it was his opinion that because it would make the restrictions less restrictive, if council wanted to include that as part of the motion, it wouldn't be a problem. He did note that if you wanted to, it also would be fine if you wanted to table, if you're considering that as being part of the text amendment, you could table until next month to give citizens another month to comment on that one or move forward with it, or just not change that one at all. It's kind of up to you guys what you want to do with that part.
Thank you, Rob. Any questions for Rob?
Yeah, I do. All right, just on the driveway. Say, for instance, that you are going down, I'm going to use, say, West Tate Way, for instance, and you're going straight back, and you have a road that comes around to the primary residence, and they're building an accessory in the back, are they going to be able to cut in from Tate Way now?
They would.
Mm-hmm. So really going to make it easier for people, like if you're having an Airbnb, instead of people cutting through your yard now, they're going to be able to get clear driveways?
Right.
I got you. Okay. I don't have any more questions.
And the person who approached me with this one, his intent was just to be able to back his boat straight into the garage that he's planning on building. He's currently parking his boat right where he's talking about putting this garage, so he's using it as a driveway as it is, which is backing the boat into the grass right now.
But it could...
Requiring it to...
Sorry, man. But it could open up a can of worms where people at one time didn't think that there was going to be cuts on the road and...
Possibly, but I mean, we currently allow people to have two curb cuts or more. We have multiple cases where, you know, we have two curb cuts and the driveway just kind of loops around and connects, or we currently would allow the house with one driveway and detached garage with a separate driveway as long as there's no living space attached to that detached garage. So the only change to this would be allowing that detached structure to have living space in it that's accessed by a second driveway.
There you go, Jeff. Charlotte, do you have anything?
Okay.
David, I know you might have something.
I don't.
Okay. Anyone here tonight wish to speak on this public hearing? Okay. Thank you, Rob. Need a motion to go out of public hearing, back into regular session, please.
So moved.
Jeff, motion by Jeff, second?
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
Aye.
Counsel, I have an opinion about the second driveway that came up after the initial public hearing. Would it be better, Mr. Attorney, I'm going to refer to you, I know Rob's already talked to Casey, would it be better to table this to give the public another month?
You don't need to do that. Casey and I discussed it, and Rob mentioned it. What's happening is you have advertised this public hearing. You can do things that decrease the impact. If you were doing, have decided to add something that's going to be more limiting, if you're going to add something that somebody might have realized, oh, you didn't tell me you're going to do that, okay, okay, well, we're going in the other direction by this change. We're going where we're reducing the impact of the ordinance on people's house or on people's property, so you can do it without adding it. It didn't, it's not a legal requirement. He was quite comfortable with that and said he had talked to Rob about it, and that's what Rob was explaining earlier. So you're all right with that.
Thank you.
On the other hand, if you all feel because you've gotten feedback from the community or something, or there's an issue here that you think is contentious, well, then you can wait. It's up to you, just as Rob said.
Council, discussion, David?
I've had nothing but phone calls in favor of it. I've not had one single phone call against this right here, and I've had 39 of them. I counted.
Jeff, you and Charlotte, and whatever you want to do. Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion tonight, then.
Are we making a motion tonight to include the second driveway or...
Do we need to amend our motion, Mr. Attorney, to include that?
I think that was, the way he's got it worded here, move it as outlined by the staff, and outlined by the staff includes this driveway issue, so you're good with that.
Okay. All right. David, you want to make a motion?
I will. I make a motion to move to adopt the proposed text amendment to Section 42-528 as outlined by staff. Town council has found this proposal to be consistent with the town's adopted land use plan.
Okay. Do I have a second? I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So we've got three to one, since Lynn is lying. Got that, Lynn?
No, no, no. I'm a no.
You're a no? So we've got a two and two, then. Okay. Looks like the motion did not pass.
I don't believe it passes.
Uh-uh.
Not at all. Not at a tie, yeah.
So when we...
The council, the town attorney can help us with that, but...
No, you have passed. So motion fails tonight, so maybe you decide whether you're going to bring it back up at the next meeting when you have the full council, or decide you're not going to move forward with this.
Okay. What's the council want to do?
I'd appreciate waiting.
Yeah, I would wait for everybody.
I think I need to think about that.
Rob, how about if we post it again with the changes for another 30 days and table this to the next meeting?
That's fine with me.
It's fine with everybody?
Well, we have a full council here.
Yep.
Andy was just asking me if there's a timeline or anything. This was a staff-initiated text amendment, so there's no...
So we can bring it back. Does it have to go back to the planning board again?
No.
Yeah.
Okay. Council, good with that decision?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Very good. Very good. Okay, Item 8B, Special Use Permit 3933 Welch Street, need a motion to go back into public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Rob. The applicant is here, Lynn.
Okay, I don't need to swear you in necessarily, but he would want to speak.
All right. This one is for a special use permit for a medical office located at 3933 Welch Street. That's located in the B C two Beach Commercial District. Specifically, the use would be for oral surgery. The existing practice has five employees and have operation hours of Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And according to the applicant, typical business days, he's anywhere from five to 15 patients. You can see in that B C two district, hospitals, clinics, and medical offices are permitted as a special use. There's no specific conditions required by the zoning ordinance for approval within that B C two district. You can see in the staff report, it's a 14,000-square-foot lot. The abutting properties to the north, south, and east are also zoned B C two Beach Commercial. The abutting property to the north is Kitty Hawk Baptist Church. To the east, located behind the subject property, is Ferguson Enterprises. And to the south is a single-family residence in the commercials. The parcels to the west of the subject property are zoned B R two and are occupied by single-family residences. Essentially, there's no changes going on to the site or to the layout. The parking area, the existing site, we don't have an ASML survey on file, but using the measurement tools on this GIS page, it appears there's sufficient space to accommodate 10 to 12 parking spaces on site, which would be compliant with the minimum requirements of 10 spaces for a clinic. You can see it has access to Welch Street that feeds into Lilian and then to 1058. So other than that, really no site changes going on. The proposed use is certainly less intense than a lot of the permitted uses by right in that B C two district. If you remember just a couple of months ago, we approved that 7,500-square-foot retail building, which is a permitted use by rights. I think this, you know, it's relatively well-placed in that residential area. It's going to be less disruptive than many of the uses that could go there without any kind of public hearing. So per the standards of Section 42-100b8, in order to approve the application, council must make findings that the proposed use does not materially endanger the public health or safety. No evidence to suggest that allowing the proposed use would endanger public health or safety, as long as any safety measures recommended by the building and fire inspectors are met. That it does meet all required conditions and specifications. As noted, there's no specific conditions listed in the ordinance for medical use. However, council can include specific conditions if deemed necessary. C will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property or be a public nuisance. There's no evidence to suggest that this proposed use would injure the value of adjoining property or be a public nuisance. As I mentioned, the proposed use is less intense than many of the uses permitted by right. And D will be in harmony with the area in which it's located and be in general conformity with the comprehensive plan. The proposed use... It's going to be less disruptive than many of the uses that, that could go there without any kind of public hearing. So per the standards of section forty-two dash one hundred B eight, in order to approve the application, council must make findings that the proposed use does not materially endanger the public health or safety. No evidence to suggest that allowing the proposed use would endanger public health or safety, as long as any safety measures recommended by the building and fire inspectors are met. That it does meet all required conditions and specifications. As noted, there's no specific conditions listed in the ordinance for medical use. However, council can include specific conditions if, if deemed necessary. C will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property or be a public nuisance. There's no evidence to suggest that this proposed use would injure, injure the value of adjoining property or be a public nuisance. As I mentioned, the proposed use is less intense than many of the uses permitted by right. And D will be in harmony with the area in which it's located and be in general conformity with the comprehensive plan. The proposed use appears to be in harmony with the area in which it's located and in general conformity with the comprehensive plan. At its January twentieth meeting, the planning board unanimously recommended approval of the proposed special use permit for the medical office located at thirty-nine, thirty-three Welch Street. And really, the only question that they had was how any kind of, like, medical waste was going to be dealt with. The applicant informed them that they'll be, I guess, kind of boxed up, shipped off-site. It's not going to be filling up dumpsters on-site or getting blown around or anything like that, so it'll all be taken care of. So without further ado, if there's any questions from the council, the applicant is on hand, if there's any question that I can...
Thank you, Rob. Counsel, have any questions for Rob or the applicant, Dr. Ziriski, who was here tonight? Any questions at all? Okay. No questions, I need a motion to go back into regular session, please.
So move.
Charlotte, second?
Second.
Second by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, counsel, what do you want to do with this tonight?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move to grant approval of the conditional use permit to allow a medical office at thirty-nine, thirty-three Welch Street. Town council finds that the proposed use is consistent with the town's adopted Camel Land use plan, finds this to be in the public interest, and finds that the special use does not materially endanger public health or safety, does meet all required conditions and specifications, and will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property or be a public nuisance, and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located.
Thank you, Jeff. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Charlotte. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Dr. Z? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everybody.
I would like to say, I know you looked all over Derrick County for a new location, and we're mighty glad you stayed in Kitty Hawk, okay?
You should have.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Z. Okay, planning, we need to schedule a public hearing for item nine A, special use permit, thirty-eight, thirty-nine Moore Shore Road. Somebody want to make that motion? Counsel, I'll move to set a public hearing at the town council meeting on April fourth to consider a special use permit application to allow commercial craving operations at thirty-eight, thirty-nine Moore Shore Road. Need a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Item ten A. This is a big one, folks. Wright Brothers Tribute Museum and Observatory. We've got a video, uh, to show, a very good video, I might add. This is a project that's been in the, kind of behind the scenes in the works since before the end of last year, November, December. A lot of people have put in a lot of hard work on this plan here. Representative Bobby Hanig has been very instrumental in getting the project this far. Charlotte Walker has, has taken it and, and run with it. And after the video, I'd like to ask Charlotte to say a few words. This is, this is, you're getting ready to see, this is going to be a project that's going to make Kitty Hawk, North Carolina, United States famous. This is going to be the only one like it that we need here in Kitty Hawk. Go ahead, Andy.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
Kitty Hawk was the first choice of Wilbur and Orville Wright for the testing and demonstration that man could actually fly. People want to experience those twelve seconds that changed the world, and they travel far and wide to do just that. Isn't it time that Kitty Hawk had a place to showcase this incredible, life-changing part of our history? The proposed Wright Brothers Tribute Museum and Observatory will be the world's largest display, housing twelve historically accurate Wright Brothers aircraft. The ideal location for this development is the site known as the Kitty Hawk Visitors Center. The plans will include a newly-designed welcome center within the current property that is owned by the state of North Carolina. In addition to the exhibition gallery, this thirty thousand-plus-square-foot museum will include a world-class observatory, STEM training classrooms, a multipurpose theater, an aircraft building workshop, and an outdoor performance area. There'll be an elegant café, as well as an extensive library and archive. The observatory will light up the night sky and appeal to visitors eager for family-friendly entertainment and education. In the mission control room, guests will be able to put themselves in the Wright Brothers' shoes by flying one of four Wright Flyer simulators. The Glen Year Monument to a Century of Flight is also located on the Visitors Center property. It will be the perfect complement and an additional focal point of the adventure. This magnificent monument deserves the spotlight and to be seen by many. The overall site planning will include significant parking for visitors, school buses, RVs, and tour buses. Electric vehicle charging stations will also be made available. As if these things were not enough, once the location is secured, this multimillion-dollar project will be fully funded through private investors that want to make this vision a reality. This project will be completed and operated at no additional cost to taxpayers. This Wright Brothers Tribute Museum and Observatory will be a tremendous gift to our community and to the state of North Carolina. It will surely spark wonder and imagination in the young and old alike for many years to come.
Folks, as you can tell, this would be an enormous project for Kitty Hawk, Derrick County, North Carolina. The people who are behind this project have made a number of trips to Kitty Hawk, being assisted, needs to be in Kitty Hawk, nowhere else, and I agree, needs to be in Kitty Hawk. The part I like was no additional cost to the taxpayers of Kitty Hawk. But, uh, there's not, as you can tell by the size of this project, there's not but so many places left in the town of Kitty Hawk where this could go. Andy and I actually made a trip in December about another site, and we were quickly finding out that the cost be too much. So this is really the only site that's left in the town of Kitty Hawk. And when this idea came about, a lot of people have been working hard, Representative Hanig, the governor's office is already involved, they are aware of this. So, uh, what I'd like for you to do, people who are watching or people who are aware, contact your local representatives, hey, we want this, we want it in Kitty Hawk. There's a lot of things, as you can tell, that, that have to happen for this project to take place. So we've got to have it, we've got to have it in Kitty Hawk. Charlotte?
This is just a win-win for everybody. The state doesn't, um, get any revenue from that piece of property there, and, um, the rest area that is there certainly needs some repair and some updating. And, um, this, this has just been a, an amazing project to work on. And to think that somebody would, is, give this project to us and give us these models and, and such an amazing building, it, it's just unbelievable to me. And I appreciate every bit of support that we've gotten for this project.
Charlotte has worked extremely hard already. Don't quit now.
I won't. Don't worry.
I find out Charlotte does not take no for an answer either. So, so thank you, Charlotte, for what you're doing.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
My pleasure.
At this time?
No, we'll, I think Charlotte will be making her trips to the other communities in the Outer Banks with a similar resolution that you passed this evening along with this video. And, um, like Charlotte said, it'll be a, be a home run if it can come to fruition.
Yes. Jeff, you and David, have any comments?
I think it'd be great.
Great for Kitty Hawk.
Yeah.
Great for a lot of people. Dave?
Yes, sir, I do, huh?
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Is that it, folks, on that item? All right, item ten B. Let's talk about some, this counsel has talked a lot about parking improvements, extra parking, new parking. And Willie and Andy have put their heads together and come up with some solutions. Willie, if you'd like to inform counsel and the public of what you've come up with?
We've been, as you say, we've been looking at, trying to do some parking improvements on the oceanfront for quite a while now. We've identified two areas that would be, would probably give us the most number of spaces and with the least amount of conflict from driveways and things like that. As you see up on the overhead, first one is Loop Street. And these, this would all be done, be paved. This area's already got stone in place, so it would be minimal to just resurface it. And that would bring about, about twenty-seven spots, including two handicapped accessible. We would make this road one-way, heading from the beach road towards the bypass, to accommodate the parking for people backing out and stuff and give more people room to walk, be a lot The other area is Glarey Out Street, which would be pretty much the same thing. Same amount of spots, maybe a couple extra. But this would also, on the south side, have some parallel parking for another ten to twelve spots, which would be over thirty spots in that one area, which we're, right now, we're probably getting at the most fifteen, because everybody spreads out, and everyone wants to tighten up and understand. So we've already got quotes from the two local contractors, and we've chosen one. Their bid was a little over ninety-seven thousand. We've already got parking, striping and stuff lined up, so we're ready to go. We just need to be able to go ahead, get the go-ahead to put asphalt on the ground. Same thing, of course, I should have mentioned, Glarey Out will also be one-way. And I would propose, um, this section of Glarey Out that goes to ride lane, to make that no parking, just to keep people in the specified parking area for that section. And I would have to answer any questions.
Counsel, we, we met, Willie and Andy and I met a couple times. Did we need more parking? Yes, but the decision was made, I think Willie and Andy said, hey, let's take a look at what we already have, let's clean up what we've already got and see if we can get some more spaces, and that's exactly what they've done here. I personally think it's a good, good thing to do. We've been talking about this for a long time and really have not moved on it until maybe tonight. Comments from counsel on this? David or Jeff or Charlotte?
I think it's an excellent idea. The parallel park, the angled parking seems like it would be a, a safe, um, issue, and I just, I think it's an excellent idea to use what we already have.
And I, and I will add, before we got to this point tonight, we checked with both Chief Johnson and Chief Tally to get their input for safety purposes, and they were all in favor of this project, both of these projects here.
It's also at a minimum inconvenience to the people that live in that area, so, um, and it could possibly benefit them as well, actually.
I think if I have the spaces, you know exactly how many cars are going to be in there, where, as before, it could, like Willie said, it could be fifteen or eight to park in the wrong way. And so the way this is, you know exactly how many people are going to be able to use it.
Striping is an excellent idea.
David?
Yes, sir.
You good with it?
Fine with it.
Okay, I guess we need a motion to proceed with both of these projects, so Willie can get going.
As long as y'all say we're good, we're good. I don't need a motion.
Well, I make a motion to have Willie keep going.
I'll second that.
All in favor of this, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, Willie, can you start tomorrow?
Well, I could. Actually, I could, yeah. This is great, Willie. Thank you for all you worked on.
This is like pulling a rabbit out of a hat here.
Good job. Thank you, Willie. Okay, item ten C, another project we've talked about for a good while, the police station. Andy?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. You do have an agreement before you this evening with the selected, uh, construction manager. We, we brought this before you this evening. We don't necessarily have to approve it, however, in the general concept of it, if we can get that approved, and then if any of the council can have a couple days to review it, and if they have any questions, get with me. But the town attorney, we just received it today, so we're letting the town attorney review this, but however, we don't want to delay the construction of the police station and the EMS station any further, so I felt it was prudent to just go ahead and bring this before you this evening. And then we wouldn't, of course, it wouldn't give us the permission to execute it once everybody's had an opportunity to, to take a look at it. But the town, we, we had a, we issued an RFQ for construction manager services. We received three applicants, from those three applicants, we narrowed it. We were able to provide, to do interviews last Monday, or this Monday, or last Monday, and the scoring sheets are on the back of your, um, agenda cover sheet. There were six people that attended this meeting, including a resident, Blair Meads, which I'd like to publicly thank for participating as part of the process. And so we were able to narrow down the three contractors to get a top selection. The selection committee chose Whiting Turner, who has an office in Virginia Beach, to be the top selection to the council. And so since that meeting, we've developed this, um, construction manager services agreement. This is the first part of the agreement. The job of the construction manager is to eventually be able to provide the town a gross, or a gross maximum price, um, which will allow us to proceed forward, and they, they usually charge a fee on that gross maximum price of about six percent, which is their profit. But they, up until the point to where they can provide that, they work with the architect, the town, the, receive bids on the projects from, from their vendors, from local vendors, anybody interested in providing a quote to them. They, they get all that together. They also look at cost-saving mechanisms throughout the whole design process, so we don't design something that doesn't need to be, you know, that we can build something with a different type of material to save the town money. So that's all going to be included in the final, the final document. However, this agreement this evening, they have a price sheet. What they do is they work all the way up until the time that there's a hundred percent documents are completed and they're ready to begin the process. If the town doesn't move forward with the actual construction, then we'll, we would be responsible for paying their estimate of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. I think that would get us to the actual bid documents. But if we do move forward, then we would receive that credit, we'd receive a credit of a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars towards that six percent that we would pay them. So basically, they put in the work in advance, and then they expect to have the job. So their job at this point is to work closely with the architects, the whole team involved, and make sure that we get the product that we want as a town when we go to construct the police station. So with that, I'll answer any questions. We can approve this tonight, move forward. However, I'm still going to want to look at some of the languages with the town attorney in the next couple days, just to make sure we're, we're good, but we don't want to delay this anymore, so. This would be bringing on Whiting Turner as the town's construction manager for the project.
Thank you, Andy. Any discussion by counsel?
Whiting Turner Contracting was overwhelmingly the first choice in the scoring, so...
Looks like that, yeah. All right, Charlotte, would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the construction manager services agreement with Whiting Turner Contracting Company.
Thank you, Charlotte. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jeff. Any further discussion? Okay, y'all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Andy, proceed. Please proceed. Thank you, sir. Okay, Andy, you're back up again. Any comments? Town manager?
Just a reminder, the spring chipping services will begin April eleventh. So other than that, I have no more comments this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Stock is sharp. Thank you for coming back again, sir. Anything from you?
No, Casey didn't give me anything except what you've already hit on, so I have nothing to add. Glad to be with you all again.
Always glad to see you're smiling. Always glad to see your smiling face, sir.
All right.
David?
Yes, sir.
Jeff?
No, I don't have anything.
Charlotte?
I'm good. I really do want to thank Andy, though. He has worked so hard on this project and had some wonderful ideas. And Willie, the parking, I'm so happy to see that, so thank you both.
We discussed a lot of big things tonight, and things went smoothly, and I appreciate Stell's input. Town staff, thanks again for what you do each and every day. Okay. Counsel, I'll make a motion to recess to March 28, 2022, for the fiscal year '22, '23 budget workshop at 9:00 a.m. I'll need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, counsel. Thank you all. Thank you, everybody.